I'm grateful for your guidance. Obviously, you make decisions for our town and our community. Yes, for all of your guidance and wisdom. Yes, you protect all of our first responders, residents, and that keep us safe night and day. Yeah, we now have our open forum and public comments section. Obviously, we have quite a few people signed up to speak this evening. And I want to make sure, it's significant in public input, of course, I want to make sure that if all of those items have been asked to read into the record, they do not. Some, some individuals have had comments here in the meeting in person. So, Tom Clark will read those to the record. And we want to remind everybody of our spill link code. That sometimes when we have issues, they can be confrontational. I want to make sure that we're careful and make sure that we respect each other. That's all of our expectations. I have seen some comments, heard some comments that have been pretty shameful. So, I want to make sure that we do that as we have our meeting. Thank you. Dorothy, would you like to read those? Who's going to, sorry, is it who we brought?
Yeah.
Robert, you want to read that again? Thank you, sir. You'll read those into the record. There's four or five of them that I saw. And then we'll go with in-person public forum.
Yes, sir. This is a letter from Cindy Gentry to Town Council, Russell, the Boathouse. Hello, my name is Cindy Gentry. And all many of you know my husband, most of you don't know me. I know you're going to vote on something to do with the Boathouses tonight. And I want you to hear our reading from it. Russell, and I love this town. It was always a dream of mine to move here. And when we bought our house, I was. I have heard all back and forth about the history of the Boathouses. I have listened to Russell and others have debated with council regarding them. This is the perspective I would offer you. As a small group of people who are responsible to make decisions for over 130 or 1500 owners, how do you know what you are doing is the right thing? Have you asked the town to know what they really want? Does anyone really know what is real or not? The biggest concern I have is the recent discovery of a large part of Laguna and another one of Boathouses, actually on the property of Mike and Dee Lee. When I saw the property survey, which is a very official and important document, I really started to ask myself the right and wrong of all of this. So, forget for that, so forget for a second that my husband is a very passionate and persistent guy. As the other half of the couple, my concern is with documents floating out there of the lead property survey. How would we be conscious, can you, as a council, vote to make any changes? Thank you, Cindy Gentry, 409 West Second Avenue, Winnebago, Florida, 34786. The next one I have is from Sue Ellen Doughty. Yeah, so we can go ahead and read yours after I'm done reading the others. All right, this one is from Russell Gentry, or Gentry, I'm sorry. Dorothy, I'm at time for work. Please send my comments to the record and to the record. Thanks, Russell. Good evening, council. Today on the agenda are a number of entries revolving around the Pine Street Boathouses. We operate in the form of representative government, we have the proper process from. While council members are charged with responsibility in deciding the will of the majority. Therefore, please ask yourself this question. What problem are we solving by taking the Boathouses over? From 1915 to 1986, there was no ownership issue or questions. It was only in 1986 when the issue came up because of their condition that the ownership argument was used in an attempt to take control, so they could be torn down. Each of you are in possession of a petition with over 60-plus residents of the town who support the continued current private ownership of the Boathouses. Over the course of this whole debate, town staff have identified anywhere near the many people who are pushing you to take over the Boathouses. In fact, the last number I was able to decide. In a vote, five people would lose seven, which is the number of current owners. Additionally, five would overwhelmingly lose to the 60-plus residents. So, back to the question. As an elected official charged with representing me as well as all the residents, why is this even an issue? If you vote on any action that you see to have taken the Boathouses from the current owners, you are doing so knowing that 60-plus of the fellow residents have indicated that you might want the current methods changed. It is fair to ignore the majority in this council? Is it fair to ignore the majority in this council process that has forged fairly for decades? Approximately 40 families have owned the Boathouses since 1960. Three of the Boathouses have been changed to the residents' last five years. The system is working with this underneath the council's direction. Russell Gentry, 409 West Second Avenue, Winnebago, Florida, 34786. The next one I have is from Douglas Heffler. My name is Douglas Heffler. I have the residence at 316 Palm Street and 12 Pine Street, Winnebago. 316 Palm Street is right next to the historic Boathouses. I believe the Boathouse matter at hand is not about whether people like the Boathouses or not. The issue is regarding the town when we are taking possession of the historic structures of the current Boathouse owners, did we purchase the equipment clean? The town should have never succumbed to a few residents' pressure 40 years ago and developed the least or the ripest access in the first place. I know if the mayor, town manager, or town council owned one of the Boathouses today, this issue would not be coming up at all. It's time for the elected officials, mayor, town council, and town manager to stand up for the Boathouse owners and make it official again that the Boathouses are legally owned by the current owners. Thank you. This one is from George Holper. Okay. Okay. Oh, it's got your name on it, so. Oh, never mind, here we go. That's good. This isn't from you until that night. Dear Mayor and Town Council members, It has been said that the Boathouses would never be in better hands if the town owns them. The town would ensure the good maintenance and preservation of these historic structures. What about the fact that the town has been trying to destroy these Boathouses for 35 years? For the past nine years, this has been the intent of the current administration. This is not a secret. One of the Boathouse owners is George Holper. Many of you know George. He has been the chairman of the historical board. It was through his efforts along with the scouts that the historic Cal Palmer Building was repaired and remodeled. He was instrumental in restoring the old schoolhouse. If you were to pass voting, you would have seen him on ladder street and pounding to the point of exhaustion. George is a master of woodwork. Woodburger. He built tables to the use of new administrations building. Why would the town be a better steward than George? 235 Palm Street? The strip line?
Graham, this is Graham.
Graham? Graham, okay. They signed it and it wasn't printed, so. The last one I have is from Frank W. Chase III, 935 Lville Street, Winnebago, Florida, 34786. Mayor, Town Council member, or Town Council and Town Manager. I'm writing to say that the Boathouses, I'm sorry that I cannot be on attendance at some meeting. I don't have the answers as far as who owns what or who leases what. I don't have answers determining how water levels or low water levels. I do have a vote grant key and I'm happy. I understand that this discussion has been ongoing for decades and may continue to add far too town meetings for decades to come. I'm writing to make sure that in your discussions tonight, and into the future, that the town does all it can to maintain and preserve these structures. If we need to purchase one or two, do it. These structures are historic and provide one of the last remaining links to our town's paths. In fact, they're the only surviving structure that's relevant to the town's, the town's connection to the public chain of lakes. When the town was chartered in 1925, Cal Palmer, one of the founders of the town, built the original Boathouse in Laguna. They're on the local registry of historical places. We should not lose them. Our town address reflects the importance of the lakes, voting in addition to town. With the three Winnebago class yachts on the upper left, dodging, and the three charter on the lower right. The Boathouses also provide a physical connection from the land of the town to the lakes they're surrounded, as well as voting in the lakes, which is so much part of Winnebago. As of the year, town changes to larger and more modern homes, stores, offices, and municipal buildings. These Boathouses along 877 School House and the Cal Palmer Office, Pine Streeters. The Town Hall and the WPK House remain as reminders of what was. That is really all what we have left as far as structures that have a history, 900 to, or 90 to 100 years plus old, that aren't publicly owned. Please make sure that they remain in our town history as honor government. Sincerely, Frank Chase. That's all I have, this is my letter, sir.
Thank you, Robert, for reading those into the record and thank you for all of those commented and reading. Well, now, again, with those for in-person comments, please remember to keep your comments to three minutes. Give us your name and your address as you step up to the voting, and you can speak into the lines. So, I'll hear you, and your comments will be part of the permanent record. We begin with Mr. Richard Higgins.
Okay.
Your results will pass. We'll move to Ms. Sue Ellen Doughty. Are you ready for us?
I think it would be a lot better. Okay, there we go. All right, when do we start? As soon as I start?
Can you bring that microphone down to a little bit or for Robert?
Hello?
That's perfect.
Good evening, everyone. My husband, Ron Diaz, and I moved to this very fair town of Winnebago 32 years ago. The Boathouse issue is important to us, both as a personal and political issue. For the present owners and personal friends that we care about and rights. Politically, we are also concerned about the power of our city government to manipulate and possibly rescind those rights. Taught at West Orange High School for many years alongside my good friends, George Rose and Karen Fay. Ron and I enjoyed the friendship of our previous neighbor, Kirk Frazier, his family, and George Pelker has become a respected friend of mine. All those Boathouse owners that you most know, mostly know, have been a vital part of Winnebago over many years, volunteering countless hours of service to people. These upright families have been negatively impacted by the town's unfortunate disregard for many years-long and complicated Boathouse history and its implications on the rights of ownership. Please note that the present lease was not for the lease of the Boathouses, but for the ingress and egress rights from the town to and from the Boathouses. That lease was agreed to, and then, as an initial compromise, to stop the desire of a few townspeople to completely tear down these structures. The compromise did stop the destruction of the buildings and the owners feeling, despite of demolition, relaxed. Never feeling a future, never fearing a future town takeover of the Boathouses and the present administration's desire to redistribute the wealth to five other local town members by a lottery. Never mind these Boathouses. One was in the same family since the early 1900s, hundreds, and another since the 1960s have been bought, paid taxes on each year, and maintained by their owners, in their fate. Question, does the city government really wish to become the Boathouse's landlord and responsible for the upkeep and maintenance? Seems improbable. The town manager spoke publicly that he sees no reason to talk to any of these present owners about this takeover. And it is time to give others a chance to have a Boathouse. So, all of this for four or five families to rent these properties. When can this power grab to take over private ownership? What way are things powered grabbing to? Where might it stop? Because they noted there is a possible problem for a town government to have charged all of these years for access rights to a public wide lane. Do I have one more sentence?
You may.
Thank you. If correct, then the owners are due restoration. And if not, these owners are at least due the respect of a negotiated, negotiated resolution of this matter. That's what a special town would do, and a fair town.
Thank you, Sue.
Thanks for the exit call.
Next up, Chris Ullman. 405 West.
One of the ways to vote off the Boathouse.
Sorry.
Can I wait until we put the Boathouse?
I mean, I think everybody is, I'm guessing everyone's here to talk about the Boathouses. But I'll give you the chance to add later.
Well, that was. Yeah, I probably have a problem. Okay, the Boathouse debate began in the 80s when a handful of residents sought to have them torn down. It carried through to 2011, when it was part of an honoring list, it was Robert Smith, Lee and Cyrus Town Managers. Now, this before the town council packaged this problem that needs a permanent solution. The thing is, there is no problem. The Boathouses have changed hands without issue for over 100 years. The surrounding neighbors are in favor of them and have no objections. The owners are more than willing to put money and repairs into the improvements. What solution would you vote for? Lottery and rent? The lagoon is shallow and passage is narrow. Difficult to navigate at best, some months impossible. One or two of the Boathouses encroach on the neighbor's property. Money has to be spent and return is modest. Is it wise for the town to be designated a landlord with these conditions? Or a historic landmark? Kick the owners out and proclaim the Boathouses historic landmarks? Take away the fact that this is incredibly mean, you must consider other factors. Cost of the town now and in the future? Liability, security? This lagoon is between Bird Island and Palmer Park. There is a boat shuttle that shuttles people back and forth. There are alligators in the lagoon and small children in the park. Can the Boathouses be secured to keep people from getting in them? Will this encourage more exploration of this dangerous shoreline? Why is it better to remove upstanding Winnebago residents who bought these Boathouses? They pay taxes, insurance, maintenance costs. They clean up the lagoon and monitor undesirable activities. They are cooperative and more than willing to abide by conditions that town sees fit to require. Why do you insist that a hard reset is called for and means denying and rejecting the Boathouse owners? They're being victimized, insulted, and demoralized. I received an email written by Palmer Love. His great-grandfather, Calvin Palmer, built four of the Boathouses. And I quote, "Well, why not end it in the only smart way? Let the people who own, rent, and maintain them cheat them. If you want more available, then build more. The town knows they'll be late front parts. Build some there." These Boathouses were built by people who would never have believed they would cause a problem. Do the right thing and grant long-term leases to the current owners who are outstanding citizens. Sincerely, Palmer and Betty Love. Please work with the current Boathouse owners. This is the only right and reasonable thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. You left out a sentence of that. That would be our secret.
Oh, lovely.
Yeah, that, that one.
Because you said.
Next up is, uh, Mr.. We're, we're good. We'll save it for later. Mr. Doug Fay. Five, six, seven, eight.
Two eight, that's you.
Oh, you just signed it.
Oh, you just signed it. It's not.
Yeah.
That was, sorry. Wait, sorry. Would you like? All right. I'm going to put a check mark where you leave this passing. Mr. Jerry Fay, 28, Main Street.
Jerry Fay, 28, Pine Street, town owner of Boathouse 7511. I haven't seen the survey. I apparently don't know all of it. Y'all were elected to represent the people of the town of Winnebago. I think you do a pretty darn good job. But I've been about five of these meetings so far, and I've heard all these folks say that they want to keep the Boathouses, let's leave them the way they are. I have not heard one person stand here and say that they want the Boathouses torn down, well, taken away from the current owners. So, how can we, why have we gotten to this point? If, if you represent the people of the town, most of the tact of my scene is all paper, leaving the Boathouse the way they are. So, let's stick with the status quo and leave them the way they are with the current owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Mayor, if we didn't sign up, can we still speak here? Because I didn't sign up. You can take my side.
We'll get you now. All right. Next up is George Holper, 405 West Thursday.
And I have two things on that. I want to speak as the chairman of HEB, and then as a resident, is that okay?
According to my list, you're up first as chairman of the HEB.
Okay, good.
Fair enough.
Good. Speaking as chairman of the Historic Presidential Board. I just want to update you guys a little bit about what the Historic Board has done in the last couple of years. With a lot of creative use of free labor, including Boy Scouts, Tom Stroup, and Chuck Hobbs, who lives across the street from the old, uh, uh, schoolhouse. We've got a lot done. Painted the Cal Palmer Building here. Fixed up, I won't say it's totally restored, but we fixed up and hatched up and fixed a lot of the rock and stuff of the old schoolhouse, painted that. We had, one of the Boy Scouts wanted to put a pathway to the privy, so if you've seen that, that's kind of cool. Just finished, they just finished, a, putting a brick patio in. And then, right, and then coming month or so, another path, set of pathways is going to go from that brick patio to the front and back doors. So, you'll be able to come from the, what will soon be a parking lot, to a brick patio welcoming you, and then on to the schoolhouse. And then, um, some plants in the works, are we, ones to sell, you know, maybe bricks, and ones to be grave bricks. And substitute the ones out of the patio, you know, or something like that, anyway. We've got a guy that's going to put up, we just closed in that old well that was there for 100 years. And it was dangerous because it was covered by a thin piece of metal that anybody could have fallen in. And the hole, the well hole was probably 10 inches in diameter. You could have gone down 200 feet, you know, a kid or a dog or something. So, anyway, that well was capped. We think the hole's plugged up, the big, there was a big hole around that hole, the well hole. We think that's capped up. I'm not sure exactly yet. And I say all that just as a recap of what we've done. In April, you guys asked us to recommend what to do with these Boathouses. And we, I say we, I did not participate in these discussions. I refused myself. But the HEB recommended continued private ownership with a lot of restrictions and that sort of thing. And apparently, you guys didn't like that or didn't agree with that at the time. And that's okay. Our main, our main, the main focus of HEB is the preservation of those historic structures. And as you've heard several times tonight already, after 1986, the history of the town council has pretty much been to destroy them. Now, I'm glad to see that you guys have the opinion that you want to preserve them. And I just want to ask that you consider doing something more than what we have already to make sure that all of our historic buildings, not just the Boathouses, but all of the historic buildings get preserved. I have two ways of doing that. One is to put a note in the town charter, like, is in there already about you can't move the schoolhouse. And the other one, which is preferable, is start an historic trust, separate entity. The house of all this historic structures would be under the historic trust. Somebody would be appointed, you know, residents would be appointed to run that. Somehow the funding, the work, all that stuff. I have, I know all the details, it's just an idea. But whatever you do, I think we need to do something more solid to preserve all of our historic buildings. I say all that in, um, in, um, what am I looking for? Anyway. A recap of, of our last couple of years. Because for a lot of different reasons, I've been resigned as the chairman of the Historic Board and resigned from membership of that board, or meeting of all boards. So, I just want you to know that. I've got my resignation here. So, that's effective immediately. And even though I had a fun time doing that Historic Board thing, I'm done with that. So, thank you very much.
George, thank you for all your service. You've got your ears now.
Yeah, well, you've become somebody else. So, so now speaking as George Holper, resident, 405 West Thursday. Let me tell you a story. 35 years ago, I moved to Winnebago. About 19 years ago, I got, offered the opportunity to purchase one of these Boathouses. So, in looking into that, I discovered that you had to be a resident. At the time, I lived just on the outskirts of what is now, what, of Winnebago. It's now part of Winnebago, but I had to, outside of the town, and it had to be a resident of the town. So, I sold my house and I moved in with my girlfriend on Main Street. And then I started talking to people that own the Boathouses already. And I talked to Fred Pryor, who many of you know, and some of you have heard his name. And I asked him about this sort of idiotic language that's in this lease. And he said, "Oh, don't worry about it. If that was just a compromise, good things done. Get it, get it saved, the Boathouses, and we'll get it all worked out in the future." Well, then Fred died, and he was, he was going to figure it all out, but he's not here to help us now. So, anyway, I did purchase the Boathouse. And a few months later, a house came up for sale with a few of the Boathouses and within walking distance. So, we, my girlfriend at the time and I, purchased that house and started remodeling it. And along about that same time, I asked her to marry me. Fortunately for me, she said yes. And that's been the best thing that's ever happened to me personally. And, um, and we all, we owe all of that to owning a Boathouse, I think. So, I want to tell you that story. Yeah, the Boathouse is responsible, rest, be married. I tell you that story because throughout this process, I've been told several times, "George, don't take this personally. This is not personal. Don't take it personally." Well, then, it is personal. It's very, very personal to me and several others. I just want you to know that. Thank you.
George. Ms. Angela Withers.
Hello, Angela Withers, 712 Main Street. A lot newer here, sleeping in rather than many of you, but still have been here longer than some of the council. As some of you know, I care very much about the history of the town. It was involved way back in saving the schoolhouse, that's one. I think this is a complex issue, and that's always hard because you try and be fair to everyone. But I think lawsuits are the way to go, and I hope we don't go that way. I would hope that the traditions that have gone on in this town that I think are one of the things that make Winnebago unique and wonderful should be respected. And if we can just work out a way of keeping things the way they are with some restrictions, I think there were times when we first moved here, and obviously, the Boathouses were quite a disaster. And if I admit at the time, I thought they were hazardous. That's not the case mostly anymore. It's one of, I think they should be made wonderful. They truly remain an asset and a wonderful part of the story of Winnebago. I think, you know, truly have one suggestion that they may be made a compromise relying, if somebody wants to get rid of one, that the town would have first strike of refusal. I'm not sure if that's a question that's here, it is in Australia. And that then they could be beaten out. I think that's an excellent idea so that nobody can say, "Well, other people don't have that opportunity." So, that would be up to the home, to the owner of the Boathouse, and say, "Well, we'll just offer it to the town." I think that's a lot to be said to that. But regardless. I think that's a lot to be said to that. But regardless, I think we do need respect to the traditions of this very special town. And those are wonderful. And I think the owners, if they know that they're there to keep, will take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Next up is Mr. Gordon, please. Four zero West Second Avenue.
Hi there. I'm four forty, seven forty, West Second Avenue. I love coming to meetings partly because I see my friends and neighbors, and it's always nice to see. I don't really have a dog in the hunt on the boat houses. I know it's very contentious. I can't believe how far back it goes. I didn't know any of this. But what I wanted to do is say respectfully, everyone in the room has been great so far. These are volunteers. These are professionals. The Rocker Smith, I think we're absolutely blessed to have them with our town. And thank you all for being respectful to the process. I've been in this room and lost the brains that I was passionate about. The council, the HEB said no, or the zoning, whoever, said no. We changed and we rolled on. So let's make sure we continue to do that and support those that help define our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Your house is very good. Ms. Laura Rofe. Four twenty-six Main Avenue.
Laura Rofe, four twenty-six Main Avenue. And like George, I have two hats tonight. So the first one is just a private citizen. I've only lived in Windermere twenty years, so I don't know the whole history of the boat houses. I know that the town's lawyers stay in town and owns the boat houses. And I think it is equitable for the town council or the town management to represent everybody who lives in the town of Windermere and give them all a chance, using a lottery, to be able to enjoy those boat houses. They're beautiful. Most of the town does not live on the lake, and it will give all the other town residents a chance to enjoy a great continent. So. Then as chair of the Parks and Recreation Committee, I'm happy to say that Pet Fest is coming back on March the fifth. We just started advertising it, and like people are signing up like we're giving stuff away, and everybody is so excited to get out of their house. So just want to let you know that we, as always, need volunteers. So if you know of anyone who'd be interested in helping out with Pet Fest, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Pet Fest is one of the best things to volunteer for. It's nice to be here. Brilliant. I miss having our little blue bitch here for sure. Next up, Mr. Bob McKinley, five three six Main Avenue.
Thank you. Bob McKinley, five three six Main Avenue Street. The question of the boat houses, you have a very difficult position. You've been advised by legal that the town owns them, therefore you should act in favor, since the town legally owns them, that you'd have a lottery system to allow each of the residents a chance to enjoy these boat houses. However you go, it is up to you. What does bother me more than anything else is that there's a lot of misinformation. I was in a meeting here several months ago when the boat house question came up, and a member of the council and a member of the group of boat house owners were to sit down and hold a discussion, kind of reach a consensus on what should be done. And I believe, unless I'm mistaken, that council offered the current owners a revised lease at an increased price over the six hundred dollar a year apartment paid per year. And that was from that. So you decided to move on. That's my understanding. The, excuse me. There's also been a lot of name publicist name calling. You can disagree without being disagreeing. And that bothers me to no end that my fellow residents would go put on social media and call the town manager all kinds of names. You don't like the town manager? That's fine. Then pointed out to him exactly what he did, that name calling should not be in that. Second, that the town manager wants something. The town manager supervises the town staff. He's the CEO of the town. The decisions are made by you five people up there, plus the mayor. You're the ones that give the town manager his marching orders, and he complies with that. He takes a lot of heat out of it. I have been copied on some of the emails by residents that were sent to the town manager and to some of you, or agents actually, that contain accusations that I did not believe and name calling is absolutely ridiculous. It's time for everybody to put on their, and riches, stand up and be nice to one another. If you don't like the decision, you have every right to contest the decision. But do so in an adult and respectful manner. There's no room for disrespect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinley. And our, well, next up is Ms. Randy, eight three five.
Hi. You already asked me, so I'm good with that. Originally, I wasn't going to speak on boat house. I do want to say I would like to defer in regards to the presentation about the water quality, as that's of good importance to me. But in terms of the boat house, I don't have any good history really. I mean, I've been coming to council meetings for almost five years. So I've heard all the discussions that have happened over here with the course of all the different council members. I understand the history. I understand as what McKinley said that, you know, that it has been determined that the city does in fact own it. If that's the case, I've talked to tons of residents. I don't personally know any that want to own the boat houses, if any, they own the boat house at least, whatever it is. But I've talked to several other people, and I would be remiss if I did not get up here and say that everyone I know, most of which are not legal owners, would love the opportunity to have this lottery to be fair to everybody. As it stands now, it's been some families, as they said, going back a hundred years. If some agreement was made, you know, twenty years ago, thirty years ago, this Mr. Pryor, whoever he was, paper's paper, as far as I'm concerned, what's in writing is what's legal. And I do think that saying that the majority of the people are only wanting it to stay in the current lease situation simply isn't true. That's just the ones speaking at this meeting. If the survey was taken in front of the whole town, I think you'd get a different response.
Randy. True. And as to the area on, what in defense or what in review of your findings?
Tom Stroup, two zero one, West Seven. I've never been in a town that has been more volunteers. In fact, I didn't even have some of the boards we had until I started getting notices about stuff. So I think when you vote, that's one of the things you need to take into consideration. The town boat houses are in shape to read because people volunteer to take care of them. The town has enough to do, truthfully. Take care of what we have. We do a great job doing that. But if you think that the people that are just going to step up now at the last minute because they want to use the boat house because they haven't moved to Windermere five years ago, they're going to take care of it as the residents have for the last hundred years, it's not going to happen. So you can get free maintenance for people who do care about it, but they need to get their hands. You can get people that are not going to quit boards because they feel like they're not being appreciated for the things they've done for the last twenty-five years in this town. And you can get town ownership of something that the town really doesn't need more responsibility for. Even if the town does own it, and I don't know if that's the case or not, I haven't attended that at all, you can still maintain the same current lease status you had with them prior to this last lease one. Now, is that correct? That's a question.
If council decided that, yes.
Yeah. So the town council could say, let's maintain, let's repeat the same lease option we had for the last previous lease option, correct? So that could be an option.
And that was offered, yes.
Okay, so now there's nothing on the boat houses. They're maintained very well, better than ever. And I think we tore down. Everybody wants them. The people that have been taking care of them for the last twenty years volunteered to take them for another twenty years. I think it's a win-win. And I think when you vote on this issue, you get your vote before you think it's best for the people that are actually doing a lot of volunteer work in this town. I walk around every Monday, Monday night, two hour, two mile, whether it's a walk. And the people in the town come out in front of the porch to say hi, because we all love each other, we're all involved. I think these two guys right here are going to pay for the legs on the table that George and I helped build. We're going to put the new avenue building. I told them we didn't need to pay for it because the town's going to pay for it. Nobody said, we want to pay for it. They want to pay for it because they feel like they're empowering to make a difference in the community. If we take out, if you start voting everything out that people want to be involved in, then you are going to have more people dropped out of volunteer status than the town will have to respond to it for ever. And we don't think we need that. So I think if you vote, the vote should be to reinstate your previous lease for another twenty years of whatever that was. Thank you, John.
Further further comment this time for boat houses or any other items on the agenda? Seeing none. We will move to our special presentations, operations, and awards. Tommy Elliott Moore, this evening, will provide Brian Ditchison's five-year service.
Brian's wife is here, and I heard tonight, so we're going to the table, that's who.
We want to do that. All right. So thank you. We'll table that item next meeting. Next up is our presentation on Windermere's lakes. How do you find you? Tony, do you want to take that off?
I absolutely do. Good evening, everyone. In order to help us better protect Windermere's lakes and natural resources, the town engaged the services of Amy Tiana, an environmental scientist and certified lakes manager, based out of Water Park, to provide technical consulting recommendations for our lake and stormwater management programs. Amy has twenty years of experience in, experience managing water resources in Florida, including prior employment with Florida Park Service, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and several local governments here in central Florida. She is currently owner of Ockus Mountain Consulting, and her clients include municipalities, HOAs, waterfront residents. Amy earned an undergraduate degree in biology from Marietta College in the Holyokeale, and a master's in environmental sciences from the University of Virginia. I have the privilege of working with Amy, but other local governments, most recently Maymont. I've worked with her, and I find her to have a wealth of information and knowledge relative to lakes managers. Amy is here to present the state of the lakes report this evening, and to provide town council and the community with details about what she's been working on since coming on board in October. She's going to let us know what looks good, where we need some improvement, and where we're headed next. So with that, Amy, if you wouldn't mind?
Thank you all for having me here this evening. Super excited to be part of Windermere to get a chance to see everybody face to face. I know the COVID situation has sort of cut us apart, but at least my job in town involves field work, and so I'm outside a lot and running some majors around the city. So thank you, Tommy, for that much interaction, and thank you all for having me this evening. As Tommy said, my background includes a lot of work for local governments, for state governments, and environmental protection, including regulatory enforcement, that type of thing. And ultimately, a lot of preserving these incredible natural resources that you have here in Windermere. So with that, we'll go to the next slide. So the lakes surrounding the town of Windermere are some of the most picturesque here in central Florida, as you probably know. Lakes Butler and Down are part of the Butler Chain of Lakes, which includes about five thousand acres of surface water and thirteen lakes connected by abaco canals. These lakes, as well as Lakes Bessie and Crescent, are part of the Windermere Water Navigation Control District, with funding that's provided by MSTU and managed by Orange County. The management efforts are coordinated by the Butler Chain of Lakes Advisor Board. The Butler Chain of Lakes are considered an outstanding Florida waterway, an OFW, which was designated by the Department of Environmental Protection back in nineteen eighty-seven. And as such, these waters are afforded extra environmental protections because of their special natural attributes. The town of Windermere is responsible for managing the following shorelines and the ports with the permit conditions outlined for the Fish and Wildlife Commission and Orange County Environmental Protection Division. We have two sites on Lake Butler, Fernwood Park and the shoreline of Callmore Park. One site on Lake Bessie, the Lake Bessie Shoreline Park. One contiguous site on Lake Down encompassing Lakes Street Park and Lake Down Park. And then one site up on Lake Crescent, which is where the Windermere Recreation Center is. Both the canals and the lakefront there are the town's responsibility. These waterfront sites are currently under contract for treatment with solitude lake management services. In addition, Windermere's retention pond at Oakdale on East First Avenue will be part of the swale retention and ditch management program. The town also owns Johnson Park on Lake Bessie, and we monitor that for two months if needed. So since October, I've been busy inspecting and evaluating current breaking storm water management program near Windermere. Thus far, I've surveyed Lakes Butler, Down, and Wassey on Way, have inspected all the town's waterfront sites, reviewed the permits for active seting compliance, met with field staff to discuss current and future management strategy and efforts, and have directed the work of the aquatics contractor to make sure that the invasive plant management program is working properly. The council responded to several resident inquiries, conducted monthly inspections, and provided content for educational outreach to the town newspaper and social media efforts. Other items in progress include securing the permit and contractor services for regrading the Lake Bessie boat launch, planning the details for the community lake cleanup slated for February twentieth, twenty twenty-two. I'll be serving with Bessie and Crescent soon, updating an inventory of berms and swales and stormwater structures in town, evaluating stormwater conveying systems, and providing staff training for environmental compliance and reporting. So many things are going well in this town, and I'm very complimentary of what I've seen from the staff efforts thus far. The invasive plant management is afforded to Windermere's lakes by the Orange County Environmental Protection Division under the auspices of the state-funded invasive plant management program out of FWC, where Orange County acts as a contractor to manage invasive aquatic plants that affect the entirety of the lakes. The lakes are full of diverse species of native aquatic plants providing excellent habitat with fisheries, good water quality, and sediment stabilization. The town staff I've dealt with are quick to communicate, they're quick to ask questions, and also receptive to information and education. The current aquatics technician from Sawtooth has been very receptive to requests for proper documentation and detailed treatment requests that I make. The permits for aquatic plant management issued by Orange County and by the FWC are current, and the sites are already on compliance. So overall, habitat for fisheries and wildlife looks excellent. There are several areas of concern anytime I'm working in lake management in urban areas that I wanted to address. First, pollution that comes from construction sites is always an area of concern for any lakefront community. Wade Trim has been very proactive in training and catching those who did not properly use slip control devices to stabilize sediment. They're able to notify people that Brad and his staff were catched. They're being very proactive and will remain such. Wade Trim does a great job of ensuring that erosion is controlled with their sites, the proper installation of slip fence and erosion control measures. Weather and construction activities at sites can loosen the fencing or sometimes wash away, so it's good to keep an eye on it. The more eyes we have in the community on these types of things, the better our lakes will be. Please always let public works know if you see any slip fence issues or sediment issues, and they'll get to that message to Brad and his team ASAP. We're also discussing the possibility of making some of our town park sites more aesthetically pleasing by replacing current plants with native aquatic vegetation and controlling or ensuring invasive plant treatments are conducted in a timely fashion. The town has recently reviewed contractor service providers for management of stormwater pipes and conveyances, and many of these are plagued with sediment and will be addressed with our new contractor for proper cleaning and maintenance going forward. And lastly, I have some ideas for improving some of the signage of the waterfront parks to better protect water quality and educate our residents and visitors. So these items are part of traditional best management practices, and we'll be featuring these in our outreach efforts through the town paper and social media. So you'll likely learn more about them if you follow that information. So lastly, there are many things that residents and companies alike need to protect and improve Windermere's waters. First of all, please join us in the community lake cleanup slated for February twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Details will not be revealed coming, but we stay to date. We have volunteers and students who need community service hours, please let them know as well. Second, there are a variety of best management practices, or BMPs, that residents can incorporate into their daily activities to reduce pollution to our lakes and floodwaters. A few examples are listed here on the slide, and more is to be covered in detail in our monthly articles and on social media. Speaking of, please like, follow, and share the environmental content that we provide. It's a very way to educate and inform our readers. And lastly, if you see something, say something. Most of the time, residents don't realize that what you're doing in their yard or waterfront may actually be harmful to the lakes. By helping each other learn and asking questions, we can take the proper steps to ensure that we have pollution prevention measures in place that are effective. I think that's all I have for the seating, but we'll be happy to take out questions when we have others. Thank you.
Also, if we have any questions. Questions about the general, why?
Okay.
Ones that I see when we're building. I know that that's not necessarily part of what you do, but there are things that we can do better.
Yes, first of all, it's important to understand that not every plant is a weed. So we have native aquatic plants that are very beneficial, necessary for fisheries and for habitat, for maintaining good water quality, and also that plant provides property value. So those native plants are really important that we keep healthy and productive in our lakes. But what we do want to manage are invasive species, and so we highlight some of those in our educational outreach efforts, and certainly provide you with a lot of informational links if you want to learn what those are. So invasive plant species aren't typically introduced from the aquarium industry. Forty, fifty years ago, somebody dumped a fish tank in a canal or ditch or whatever, and when those plants that are from other countries or other parts of North America, we don't have any native controls or grazers or predators that eat them, and the populations absolutely explode. So some species like Hydrolan, up in the propensity, that grows six inches a day from either stem tip, and they, many of them reproduce by fermentation, so it just takes a vote for color to cut through. You've got two new stems, you know, active growth on each tip, and you can quickly do the math and see that if things aren't managed regularly, you can quickly get out of there. So on the surveys I've done, everything looks really good. The town is managing the majority of the open water areas. It's full of native aquatic plants, but we do, as waterfront homeowners, have a right to maintain the vegetation on the shoreline to give you navigational and recreational access to the lakes. So if anyone has questions about how that works, I would be happy to take a site visit once we have that.
Is it, is it recommended or good, or even allowed to, allow people to create beaches? No?
So that's a good question. There's an area along the shoreline where you're allowed to remove aquatic vegetation, and that's called an access corridor, and that gives you navigational and recreational access to the water. You are not allowed to bring in sand unless it is placed above a normal high water elevation, and it has to be retained behind something like United State Timbers or whatever, to speak that Washington store, if that makes sense. So when you see those white beaches, those are big enough. And you don't want that because those plants are there to take up the nutrient runoff and a lot of the nutrient pollution. So if you don't have the vegetation there, instead they have the, um, cycle of algal blooms. And you've probably seen dragging the ice storm water on, you know, scum and worms on the surface, and, you know, we don't want that to happen in the lakes, so.
Council, any additional comments, or energy?
Yeah, speaking of lakefront vegetation, there's there seems to be an overabundance of, I don't know if it's duckweed or pondweed, that seems to be taking over the lakes and making navigation pretty much possible. It wasn't there, you know, a decade or two ago, and I know that that's considered an indigenous plant and will not be treated unless it's classified to something like Hydrolan. And I've also, I've also been told that there's a new weed which has been found on the one of the lower, more southern lakes. It's more of a water hive scent or something. There's a new, one of those weeds that clogs all the canals in South Florida, and it's been discovered down by Lake Sheen or Tibet. At any rate, the pondweed, is there anything in the works to be able to treat that? Does it really has created navigation issues?
So pondweed is a native aquatic plant that we'll talk about under ideal conditions of convergence service, and it does present sometimes navigational issue. If it's around your dock, we can treat that. If it's out in the open areas, we'd have to speak to Orange County PD and FWC to see if they would authorize basically cutting a boat trail through there. But it's an important plant for fisheries and for nutrient uptake. The reason we're probably seeing this population decline over time is that it responds to many of the same curbsides we used to treat Hydrolan. So when we have massive Hydrolan infestations in these lakes, and we've got to target that to get rid of it, unfortunately, pondweed is also susceptible plant to those chemicals. So we end up losing the invasive plant which we wanted, and then non-target damage sometimes happens with some of the native species.
Well, I'm not talking about loss of pondweed. I'm talking about staking your entire business.
So you have the Hydrolan under control now?
Yeah, you do.
It's a pretty small area of it, so the pondweed is exploding, and it's got some pondweed and yellow ass, goldeneye, and pintail, all important for fisheries. But if you have a navigational issue, please feel free to get in touch with me, and I'll be glad to move you back to the permitting agency for the safety.
Thank you.
Sure. Thanks.
Counsel, any further questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Oh, this is agenda items and reports or consent items. You have two items on our agenda this evening. First one is I've made Z21-08. This is 11536 Lake, uh, third pole park. This is a variance to allow a dock to approach 107. For people with property lines, uh, extended engine to the lake. DRB area was approved 5 to 0, and IDV is Z21-09. This is 435 Butler Street. Uh, this is a variance to allow a garage on a contiguous corner locked with the 19. Step back, DRB residence. Counsel, you can look at both of these items as one, or one may ask separate.
A motion to approve both.
Motion to approve both by Counselors Williams. Questions? Seeing none, we'll get to the other parts of the meeting.
Aye.
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 Consent items, A and B, three and a half. Hi, these are meeting minutes for December 14th. Stat corrections, counsel.
I should agree.
Motion to approve by Counselors Williams. Second by Counselors, questions, Congress?
We have the discussion, and I know I listened to the transcript of our last council meeting many times with respect to what you wanted to see in a lottery agreement or community agreement. And so I listened to it and Robert listened to it, and he wanted some clarification, or he wanted some clarification on whether to allow the historic structures just to remain as are, as they are right now, whether you want to have them repaired or, and no tenants in there, so that's one of the discussion items first, right? And then the other thing you have before you is a revised lease agreement that I compared that had all of the points that we talked about at the last council meeting. And then compare version, which shows you what I revised from the prior version. And I'm then ready to summarize in that in the draft application process if you want to move forward with the lottery.
Thank you, Counsel, for the remarks. Okay, so Counsel, that leaves us with two discussion points for this meeting on structure and how we want to have that structure made. And then also then to drop down to item number two, which will be current revised lease and then the requested that lottery application. So we'll discuss those in that order. So item number one is discussion related to leaving structures vacant, clarification from the previous workshop where we had discussion on whether there would be interest in, because there was such reluctance, or maybe some, some lack of support for allowing those to sell to other residents. We want to make sure that we had that conversation in terms of whether there was interest in leaving the structures historical yet vacant, at least for the time being, with the counsel's guidance, whether that was permanent setting or temporary structure. You didn't, you didn't have some conversation on that? But I do not believe that it was completely closed out, so we wanted to make sure. And I believe that came up from Counselperson, that, that came up from you, sir?
Yes.
So, did you want to speak a little bit more on that?
So, where, the concern I have is it's a little bit broader than leaving structures vacant.
Thank you.
Or what to do with, I, I just don't feel the council has adequately explored other options for the use of those boathouses, whether that's even the vacant, repaired, or unrepaired, or other uses for them specifically thoughts that come to my mind, or are, you know, a museum of the lakes, or a Windermere area lakefront heritage use. I don't think we've gone to the historic preservation board, more parks and rec to explore those options to their fullest, and I, I feel very uncomfortable jumping right into a lottery without exploring all of the options going forwards.
So Counselperson has, and then just so I can make sure I'm understanding, so is it you are thinking to verify that in or discuss interest in leaving them they're vacant for the time being, while further, further discussion and/or further volunteer committee input is, is sought out?
I, I feel it's either leaving them vacant or continuing the lease month-to-month until that, until that exploration's completed. I hate to, I hate to drag this out any further than it's already gone. It's gone on for, you know, decades at this point. But, you know, a one month or however long it takes for this council to determine whether this is an appropriate course, I think is prudent for us to do.
I do believe we had each, I think we had a historical board input, I believe. Did we have Park in for this, Robert?
The, nor, you, yeah.
And, and Counsel of the Union, Park Recreation is looking at having an opportunity to rent out this one of the boathouses for pack slash food storage. And the revenues from that would go to Park Recreation and onto the correct, Nora?
Uh, that was one of, was one of the ideas, and I think ultimately Park and Rec was in favor of the lottery system.
So my concern, Robert, in, in there is that I, I don't feel that that was documented through the town council process in order for us to solidify that in the meetings. Robert, you and I discussed the 2016 meeting minutes. Going back throughout history, I, I've never seen that discussion sort of codified in that, in any meeting. Is that true, Stacey?
Yeah, the meetings I've been involved with and Judy's reference was the 2011 meeting. That was at the expiration of the 10-year term of the 20-year lease. And again, it was only on board, you could take a look at those. And at the time, we didn't have, or I didn't have the renewals that were done, I think, six months, a year after the original lease was signed. So once that was received, then it was understood that it's a 20-year lease. Then in 2016, Judy came back and asked for the town to consider extending leases or renewing leases because again, they didn't want to put money into these structures unless they knew that it was going to have a life after 2021. At that meeting, council consented to not moving forward with extending leases and had discussions relative to a lottery system, and that is the minutes.
There were similar discussions I did in 2016. And, well, at that 10-year point as well, my memory serves correctly.
Oh, that's about 10 minutes, Chuck.
And I really, well, I might have my dates off, but there was a session. I checked the notes prior to the meeting, and that's where that was meeting that Judy was referencing, that their room ran. There was still, there was still some opposition. We talked about limited We talked about limited access to lakefront and wire, larger homes and things like that being built on the lakes. And that was the, that was the impetus for that next five year discussion, I believe. Judy came back to talk to me in 2016, if that's the correct case. All right, so those are documented. So council person David, I mean, I think at this point, we didn't, so you know, if you want to, I mean, are you suggesting that they table it on the moment and get that additional input? That is this structure or?
I believe you either need to table it and send it back to the historic preservation board at Parks and Rec to get their official stand on it. So the council has complete disability as to what those boards are entitled to.
Okay, so council, looking for input on how you guys feel about that, because ultimately that's what we're saying.
I'd be agreeable with it.
I think you said it would be harder to that, yes, yeah. I'm sorry, I speak mask as well, so be my own chore. I'm awesome. All right. Council person David, your thoughts on that?
I think my only hesitation is that the lease is now, like, if we're ready to table it, then we leave it and want to deal with and discuss and then do not continue the month to month.
So I think that that would probably be quite challenging. If you're going to table it for a month or so, where we work out some of this, it's probably easier to leave things as they are. You know, I understand what you're saying, but.
It's like not closure for everyone. You know, if, if, if it's closure and it's just a month, month, then I'll leave it that. But I feel like it's not closure, maybe that's why. So if we're closing and it's month to month until we take, you know, until we have this conversation, then I, then I'm agreeable to it.
Well, currently, all of the lease holders are on a month to month basis at this point. But with a third date notice, I believe that's correct, she's the date notice.
The month to month requires a third date notice to determine if the town's going to make a lease.
Thank you.
I started a little bit of that as well. Where I landed was, you know, at least they're being looked at for this part at this point. You know, during the workshop, I asked what the goal of the, of this movement's motion was. And you know, we came up with historic preservation, accessibility and fairness to all of the residents.
Correct.
Okay, so I think in effort to track towards those goals, the historic preservation, if they were vacant, if they were not tended to by anyone, you know, that, that's where I, I was.
So it's your thoughts that with a new, with some different parameters, the options may be more than what was initially discussed when they came to us with their initial recommendations for that fair statement? Council person second.
So I guess the question, putting from a historical board looking for direction, seeing any opportunities for more, sure, fully. On side of that, so. So historical preservation, my uncle. Yeah, the historic preservation for doing final recognition, but guys down there, I guess there's some suggestions that it's vacated during that process.
So I believe that historic board and Parks and Recreation, council person David is suggesting that we go back to Parks, go back to historic to make sure that with some new parameters and new framework that their suggestions are not different than what they might have had a few months ago. I believe, you know, I mean, I believe it's a message or way of this structure that you would terminate the lease, that you would just continue month to month while we work this out. I don't think that, I kind of feel like you're, that that would probably have more negative positives, you know?
Yeah, I mean, if there's access required, I think that at least states reasonable access or, or get in there. You know, what the vote is going to hinder, you know, the business, but.
No, I think you could also put, you could put a timeline for this to get recommendations back from those two boards. If you're, you know, if council's concerned about drawing out access.
Yeah, the other part in that there may be HPG, when they made their recommendation, it was a long term lease.
Right, nine, nine years.
Yeah, it was long. They didn't look at other options, you know, that was their first push. But now that it's been taken off the table for the time being or forever. And, you know, maybe they need to, to open the minds, let's come up with new or suggestions, you know, the possibilities.
I don't know. Yeah, I just don't want it to be like a slow game, you know? But if there's truly, if those boards feel like, hey, listen, we didn't envision this, you know, we envisioned something else. So now this gives us additional options and parameters as well as the opportunity to get additional public input on this. And I mean, I don't object to that and a couple of months is not going to.
Yeah, I just think that's anybody, I consider this decision requires us as good stewards of this to explore all of the options before we make the decision to go straight to the lottery.
Yeah, both long and fine, but I said, in the past, leading up to this point, you put this in front of the historical preservation board, it needs one year prior to expiration. This is only eleven hours, we got a suggestion in the ninety nine.
You, council could recommend sixty to five days or something, I would go any longer than that. And then once we, if that's what we agreed on, have additional conversation on. But time may or may not last to put into the efforts conceiving of the draft lease and the draft. Yes, councilman Martin?
I don't want to spread this too thin, but should be considered along with planning committee input also. You know, existence, they, you know, this, by turn, make it ninety days, ninety days to get your recommendations in. Like it's time to meet. And then discuss, read, make some decisions and come to the table.
I don't get to that. Where do you see, yeah.
Just in terms of just the long term plan for the long range, but. Well, I mean, no, but, yeah, and there is some, so there is some value there in terms of, you know, one of the issues that comes about is we have, you know, it's Windermere among the lakes and, you know, I've been as recently as twenty years ago, you can take a walk and see the lakes a lot more than you can see the mountains and that's just the nature of the east. What I don't want council to do is miss opportunities, not looking forward enough like we did when we took the streets away down on Lake Butler and things like that, that, that used to have access and view points to the lake. And those were sold off to the utility property owners at the time, but the council thought they were doing the best thing at the time. So, you know, this is always difficult to predict what, what the future looks like. But whenever we have these opportunities, I don't object to making sure we spend the time to do it right.
Well, we're going to go down that road, like, it's all, Parks and Rec.
Yeah, Parks and Rec, so Parks and Rec obviously in danger.
Yeah, so ninety, ninety days.
That's fine, ninety days, so. And if it's, I, I.
I agree with councilman Martini, you know, long range planning, if we do take these over, that needs to be in the long range planning for, with, for expansion and all that stuff. So I, I, thank you. You're welcome.
Anybody offering? I think so, I, I agree.
I think we want to discuss those.
Yeah, we can work, well, I mean, let's get, let's get through one thing and then talk about the motion for that or take that as.
No, I have, I have a report motion, the clarification as well, because council member Lane said if we were going to other options relative to the current tenants. That's one clarification, or I don't want to go backwards, I want to go forwards. That is the consent and the desire of town council, which was decided in October and November, which was to go ahead and for with something new as opposed to going back to the way that it was. So I need clarification on that. So if that's where we're continuing to move this forward, then yes, we'll go ahead and take attention, you know, and the Parks and Recreation for their input on, okay, now that it's decided that we're not going to extend the leases to the current tenants. What are the other options that you guys can figure out? Because if not, then we're going to continue to see this.
Yes.
This cycle continuing to happen.
That's what I don't want, I don't want to continue this churning and I think we've seen enough churning, so. All right, so let's break it up into two items, council. Basically, basically we'll have, we'll leave a motion to send this to Parks, historical board and long range planning with the understanding that the lease is not going to be extended. And then that'll give them the opportunity to give us further input. After that, then council can then come back and provide staff with guidance or motion as to whether, for a date of termination of current lease, right? All right, so that's what we're looking for.
Well, mayor, with that being said, since I broke this up, I'll make a motion that we send it back to long range planning, historic preservation board and Parks and Rec to determine all possible courses of action, assuming that we are not continuing to use the correct.
And I'll say that.
So we have the first on the motion by council person David and second by council person David, council further discussion on that. Yes.
You're still on, well, it's a way that we forward it, it, it seems like the, the, I don't know what it's making the third.
It'll be, I, I think what we'll do is we're going to break it down and do, we'll do a separate motion if that's council's intent at that point. Who, council will then have two decisions on a separate motion, on whether to continue month to month or whether to terminate that lease or do this.
Okay, it's just the assumption portion of his motion, right, to clarify, instead assuming.
Well, he can assume in his motion, unless someone tells me, he can assume in his motion, he's asked. Previous council vote that the lease would be ended. Because that is what we said.
Right, so you're giving clarification.
A date of that, yes. Is that, is that fair?
Those are questions, those are, this is assuming that that was the direction of the town council. My intention is that is.
That is the direction of the town council.
So you're to now proceed with the leases.
That was a previous vote and then we, we voted to not rescind it, so that's, that's, I believe, what we said today.
Correct, so I guess the point of clarification that we made in the motion, I think to your question, Chris, council member Sapp, is that we take into those three restricted boards with the understanding that the leases will not be renewed with those.
Correct.
Okay.
And I, we probably, it'll be amended as well to be within sixty days for the boards to manage this.
Good. Amendment for sixty days, motion maker, second or favorable? Second, okay, you're favorable and comfortable, okay, good. Any further comment, questions or concerns in terms of how we've got that shaped up? Seeing none, we'll begin voting with council person Williams.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. So then the next point of discussion will be to be, does council desire to allow those current lease holders to remain with their month to month lease while this is completed in sixty days? Or does council wish to terminate those leases with notice?
Mayor, I don't see any issue with the current tenants remaining until this, you know, so that decision is made.
Okay. We'll be motion. It's a very big one, it's. They'll, they would let us know if they did not, I would assume, so, all right, so we have motion to that effect.
I'll make the motion, continue on, on day, if I did, I was a bad thing.
I'll say. Okay. Motion maker, council person Sapp, second, council person Martini, even for discussion council. Seeing none, we begin voting with council person Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously for continuation of the month to month leases with thirty eight. So at this point, we still have our lease discussions in front of us. Council, some that we want to patch out now or do we wish to wait until we have the further recommendations? Staff can provide, if there is any, I don't know, because, you know, I want to be smart about time.
Understood, again, I wouldn't want approval of something unless it's pulled it out of the other options that are made and forward. So, you know, these straps are out there, they're, I think, all consented to and agreed on by our town council members. So we can always bring it back if the lottery system is the route that the council wishes to.
That's my thinking, and there's no point in spending a ton of time if they, if there may be a different direction at this point. So, council, are you all amenable to that?
Yeah. I would agree with one that works.
It's just version eleven of the lease.
Right, yeah, version eleven, no problem.
Yeah, I think we've gone far enough in the revision process of the possible leagues that we're talking about have changed.
And they're very close with the exception of if there is some new direction, so, all right. If those recommendations stand, the liaisons have a responsibility to help move this in the next sixty days with their committees. Any additional council before we move on? All right, so we end, we'll move to item eight, just like, so this is the I venture change mark, something online address. The town premier office, ten thousand nine hundred ninety dollars makes some sense. The retroactive, I think, to council, that's the invoices nine hundred and ninety, ninety dollars. Okay, so that, council looking for motion. For, motion approved, council person, your second.
Second.
Second, council person. Questions, sir, any council? Seeing none, we begin voting with council person David.
Aye.
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 Aye. And my, can, other items for continued consideration? West Avenue, Second Avenue Stormwater Roadway, water improvements ninety percent design. All right, staff recommends approval. Staff, any questions or concerns?
No, we've done, I only have the proof of production plans, we have the management plans, ready to set to water management, this is a first week for nine percent plans to provide townhouse, we did it all, various public workshops, the various onsite meetings. And we're ready to go and submit at Marshall line, at F E M, to submit the designs. And we're going to concurrently put more activities local versus also. We have had a lot of public input, a lot of public meetings and here to trust all the sense of the people on the second.
Right, again, appreciative for the pre-work that goes into this, I think that makes, certainly makes our job a lot easier there, but also makes the input and the knowledge of those individuals who are impacted by those projects. Makes everybody feel. Council, any questions or concerns regarding this site, or motions approved? Motion approved, what is your proof, council person David? Second?
Second.
Second from council person David. Questions, concerns, council? Seeing none, we vote with council person David.
Aye.
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 And then the West Second Avenue Stormwater motion unanimously. Next item is item two, Railroad Roadway property swap for nine to eight Main Street, stop roads and. Council, we refer a motion to approve.
A motion approved.
Motion approved from council person David, second?
Second.
Second from council person David. Questions, concerns or comments, council? Seeing none, we begin voting with council person Sapp.
Oh, God.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, all right.
Hard to?
Remember. Sorry. Everybody paying attention?
It was.
Next up is Railroad Roadway property swap for one, zero, three, six, Main Street, this is GBS investments. Next up is Railroad Right of Way, property swap for one, zero, three, six, Main Street, this is GBS investments. Staff recommends approval. Counsel, looking for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Councilperson Williams, second. Second, Councilperson Martin? Begin voting, Councilperson Dave.
Aye.
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 That is our formal business. Item four, counsel is chief for food truck dispatching. Staff asked me earlier in the week whether we want to consider postponing our thing trucks due to the uptick in COVID. Everybody getting it, let's just call it that. But since I felt that there was time, you know, whenever there's the opportunity, I'm, I think kind of the decision is active. Let's make that opportunity. Counsel provides input on whether we can forward or not with the data that we have now. Certainly, we're gonna be peaking. If the models are correct. I think we've been fortunate in terms of this particular variant, that it does not have the same impact on hospitalizations and serious illness and death that some of the other adult older end have. Made some good decisions there, so, you know, but I want to make sure that we are cautious in that you guys have the opportunity to, to ensure you're putting on whether we can forward or not with that event. Mayor, looking for a motion? I don't think we need a motion for this. I think it's just, I'm looking for everybody's input. We'll come to a consensus and give staff direction.
I'm good with my board.
I see three thumbs up. What's the date? And I think the trucks are already scattered.
January twenty-eighth could be the date before Friday of the month. And if any postponed events occur, then they just get moved to February, March, April, so just bumping them to the additional month if they are available. But again, we just wanted your input on whether or not, because we want to make decisions to cancel or keep it going with that input.
You could, or amended would be a definite. With what we know today, I think probably okay with food trucks. It's a tough one, guys, that's. I haven't asked you guys, but it's better than that, right?
I think it's a good idea. I mean, I know it has an item up in the public yet. Probably won't come unfortunately, but I, I, and I think people who aren't going to come from our control incoming won't come, so I, I.
Alright, I think, I think we have directions to move forward, or, you know, take one?
Thank you.
As we can, so hopefully it's the right way to go. Any further input on that council meeting?
Just a pre-work, free giveaway is Saturday, January twenty-second, from ninety-two. And it'll be in the parking lot next to the brewery. Easy reference for a lot of people. And, trees will be delivered on the twentieth, Thursday, that will be tagged in as a bag of the helping people load them up on Saturday the twenty-second.
Are they dead trees?
Not yet.
Okay.
It'd be time.
We, we can use it though, because it's, because it's the next year's tree giveaway. I know I took a harm in plant lines from last year.
I guess I'll try this.
Turn it around.
I still have a great early, I'll be taking care of that, yours is good.
I'm consistent in nothing else. Any further council meeting?
I've got a report, it's not a standard, it's on a report, but there's been a uptick again seemingly on Oakdale Street, especially in the seven, eight hundred blocks, a couple of traffic again. I think we're back to pre-COVID, the traffic and such, so. As you recall, would be implemented a couple of trial areas back two years ago. In one of those, it's been almost on pitch wood, and then you had those correctional signs or, you know, no turn signs that were at one on Main Street, and then also on Six Thousand. And then we're gonna see how they work, and go back to the dominant of areas, and consider the whole area of signs or sort of varied streets. COVID obviously happened, that was definitely a bit of traffic, I guess, and it got quiet, and we're back to it again, so. I reached out to town manager and public works and PD working together coordinating encounters on Seven Avenue between Oakdale and Main Street, and then on Seventh, and then along Oakdale, which is Six Thousand and Seven, and that areas. To get counsel, we can compare, you know, where the, where the pre- COVID, and then from that point, recommend doing a workshop with the residents, getting their feedback, looking at our data. And then thirdly, from there, we'll put it in front of Long Range Planning, if there's something else to do, and then in front of council, and that would be kind of the reputation of the process.
So you're amenable. Definitely, the lines are pretty, you know, increased recently, I think, since things are cutting down, so. That usually only happens when you have the.
Make sure that she's left there on Oakdale. Large of the, of, you know, so. Especially for sidewalks of the road, very, very narrow.
See everything you need to move that forward?
Uh, yes. So, I don't know, we might workshop with these, or probably do a great bit of work with that.
Sounds good. Would be anything else to improve?
None at this time, but, you know, we do just a general public workshop, just getting input from the residents first, not a general town council workshop. And bring that data to RFP to assist them, and there's, yeah, and then have a town council workshop, which brings the town council, I mean, at least we have the data first, then get public input second, and then provide it to our teachers, so they have both sides.
Sounds good. Anything else from counsel for staff?
Those are myself today.
Say more time.
Those towns are themselves today.
Okay, good. We're. Thank you for, you not kicked off, and, yeah. So this calibrates speed and also the caliber. Reprovision, the number of cars.
If ours does.
The P D one does, the public workshop does. That's on, uh.
Yeah.
Oakdale Lane.
Yeah, definitely, but that's the one that has the two cords that go across the road. That's the most faster one.
Okay, good. Let's see where we're at. I mean, it's kind of, there is kind of full uptick now, so. We'll move on to our staff reports. If anyone started with, uh, Tom.
First of all, thank everybody for their donations over the holidays season. There's new down, where I lost father on the birthday of the twenty-seventh, so again, thank you all for the support and the horn and assistance during that time, you know, because again, I keep the fires running, so I do appreciate staff's help and town council's help with that. We do have a story walk that is scheduled for February twenty-first. What that is, is we're working with Orange County Library System, and this is in addition to us doing the ASL, work with them to where we teach kids, and their parents have sign, sign language. We're going to be doing a story walk with them, where they're gonna have little post-its and little areas where people can walk around, and they can tell stories and read a book, they'll have a certain book, it's got a book's name. But they'll walk around, and they get to do that little scavenger hunt. One of the things that's incorporated into that scavenger hunt is they're going to be doing artwork where the typical, which is Christmas artwork is on the Monday displays. We're gonna be doing like angel wings, kind of like you see in Austin, Texas, or Nashville. It's more a photo op thing, but also gives more attention to the event, so they'll be putting that up probably in the next few weeks. February twenty-first. DRB, RFP, and HTP all have openings for memberships. Some of that was due to reservations, and another one is because of reservations due to elections to town council, so. It's not all negative, it's positive with, with that turnover. DRB will be meeting on the eighteen. I believe we had one issue that was tabled from last meeting, and then we had two additional items to discuss. We submitted an RFP for event coordinator for the food truck event, and that was going to be posted on Friday. Project meeting notes are sent out today. If you have any questions, please let us know. The once-in-sales tax initiative is coming back, and we'll be discussing it at the February town council meeting. If not, we'll go ahead and do a workshop on that issue, because they're looking for support resolutions, and I would like somebody in the county to do presentations to town council. And then get copies of where the supporting resolution is going to be, and also a copy of the ordinance that they're looking to submit to the V O C C for their approval, so to kind of want to know where the sausage is made and the ordinance, to make sure that everything that they say is going to be a part of what we're bringing to, to support. So, you know, the question was raised, of course by me, that if you don't do a supporting resolution, does that mean that you are excluded from any revenue generated by that non-sale tax? And I was informed that that would be a policy incident by the V O C C, because they are putting their political lives at risk for this non-sale tax, so pretty much the answer was, more than likely, you wouldn't be participating in this.
Their political lives?
Yes. Those are exact words. So, anyway, that, that's going to be coming back, and we can talk about that with whatever Orange County representatives. But one of the items of discussion is, is, you know, generate six hundred and ninety dollars a year, and forty-five percent of that's going to Sunrail, forty-five percent of that's going to Lince, and the remaining ten percent will be divided to the new values, so our cut would be three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars a year. Whether it be twenty years or thirty years. So we will see a direct benefit, even though the majority of that is going to areas that are not going to direct benefit us, which is Lince and Sunrail.
Same amount as last time.
Yes, sir. But what Orlando and other use values are arguing exists is cost of not up. You know, they're requesting twenty percent, and by the reaction of the kind of administrator, that doesn't seem like it's going to fly. So maybe fifteen percent, but we'll see what happens once it gets through the bidding process and public hearings, but we'll have Orange County here to do a presentation, or for us to get a full understanding of the process and the program in order for us to submit a resolution support.
One of our arguments can be too, our respect that the governor wants to give gas tax breaks several of them during the year, so that's going to additionally cut into those infrastructure costs. That's going to have to be made up someplace.
Agreed. When you see the gas taxes, because vehicles become more fuel efficient, you know, electric, it's going down there. So that's why they're proposing a non-sale tax, because it's not a mileage increase, it's because that would just hurt the residents. And you do a sales tax, and everybody that is coming to the Orange County area is paying that. Now, there's caps on car purchases, boat purchases, and I know there was a question last time, but again, you know, this is one of the, trying to say it's fair, because everybody that comes to Orange County is paying that tax, not just the Orange County residents. Leave our analysis point five, so we'll do a seven point five, and that point five goes to schools. And the last thing I have is, you know, once we get that finalization of the conflict for Fernwood Park, for it to become a private boat ramp, which will be in March, that coincides with the V O C C, we'll be discussing the no swim slash no waste zone area for Varan, so it's good synergy there that, you know, we're moving in our direction. Hopefully, it's for tail issues that we're probably going to see coming up this summer.
We're in need a lot of support from residents for that, so I, I should, I said that before everybody left, just. But that's, that's something that if we turn out for, we'll have much, we'll be able to support our commissioner, and hopefully get some relief, especially for individuals that live with a earshot of, of pretty good, but.
We'll make sure that we advertise it, I'm sure we're going to get a burning, and it's nice to hear your response, so.
Yep, sounds good. I mean, lots of positive feedback from residents on your efforts in terms of of working with your team and getting out there for everybody and responsiveness and straightforwardness, so. Definitely making a difference.
Thank you. Well, they made my job easy, very easy. So I have some.
Everybody's happy.
Good. I have some great news to share with everybody this evening, and with town council. One of our first smaller projects is going to kick out underway here shortly, the first and forged forest drainage project. And I always like to let everybody know that construction schedules are tentative, because they're based on weather and materials delivery, especially right now with COVID. However, if all holds strong, we anticipate mobilization, receipt of stormwater structures, and a layout of erosion control materials next week, which is the week of January seventeenth, so yay! Sorry, I got multiple hats here. So I'm really happy to see that project get underway, and I'm sure the residents will be as well. The public works speed trailer is out at First Avenue between Forest and Butler, so you may have seen that. The holiday lights are coming down, and they should have been done with that today. The sidewalks, we're trying to keep those as dirt free as possible. We've got a new, a new roller for our sweeper, so our guys are out there on that getting those sidewalks swept. In Sunset Bay, we sprayed for some mossy sidewalks. We've removed the wind screens at the Main Street tennis court, because we have new ones on the way that we're going to install, so that'll make that area look a lot nicer. We also did some tree removal over there with the blessing of the tree board. And we'll be adding some trees over there as well for the ones that we had to take down or interfering with the tennis courts. We're working with Allstate Lighting to address breaker issues at the Main Street tennis courts. So they've been out there this week, trying to determine why that breaker switch keeps popping and the lights keep not coming on in the evening, so we are working on that. We've been grooming roads, replacing split rail fencing throughout town. The door hangers for First and Forest went out today, to let everybody know that project will get started. One of my favorite things to do this last couple of weeks was to meet with Middlesex on the paving. We're going to be meeting with Councilman Dav to show him some of the areas that we need to have repaired with the paving for this year.
Is that going to be, I'm sorry, will that be for Main Street, or whoever happens?
Yes, Main Street, six. The only road, obviously, that won't just second, because that's going to get repaved with that project.
Well, that would be one of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you can see, especially on the transitions, it's, they're getting confused.
Yes.
Starting to get into the, into that first area, so.
Yep, John Travis and I went out and noted all of them, and then we just want to show Councilman Dav and talk to him about what we think the solutions are for those areas. Middlesex is aware of those areas. They're supposed to be coming together with their pricing based on their Orange County contract, so I'm hoping to have that back to you all for approval in February, that's the goal, so we can get that worked out. The boring at Lakes, the boring under the road at Lake Street Park, the contractor has promised me he will be there by the end of this week to complete that. Once he does that, boys electric, we'll be able to get Duke Energy out there to connect up the power to the pedestal, we'll be able to get those cameras installed out there. The other thing we're doing at Lake Street Park is we, John and I found an anti-climb barrier that's only available in the United Kingdom and Canada. It is a rolling barrier, so when they try to climb on it, falls, and they can't get up on the roof, so that came in from the UK last week, so. It came in from, from, from England, and John and the boys will be installing that next week. It's going to be a learning process as well, with John overseeing that installation, since it's not an American product. We've been, we've repaired potholes at West, Second, Sixth, and Bayshore this week. We fixed a utility cap at the sidewalk at the Willows that was causing an issue, so Brian was able to actually get that tightened down. We've removed the dust to Don signage over at Fourth Street Park. Helped with some temporary fencing. We had a tree that came down at Palmer Park on a residential fence, so that fence could be getting repaired, but that material was delayed, so the boys went over there, and we're able to secure a temporary fix for that yard. We fixed the master section here in Town Hall, so that's done. So that's my report, everybody.
Thank you very much. Counsel, are we able to, besides version twelve, do you have anything?
Looking forward to version fourteen. No, happy new year, everyone, for the see all of you.
Keep it, is it good tonight?
Say, everybody, I'm not sure this is during that. We've been having, I think everybody here's been having multiple meetings for the new facility, finalizing that. We're very involved with the IT vendors and our F D L E, making sure our security measures and all that set up place, I see, just measured and stuff like that. Laying out our planning and strategic plans already down for twenty-twenty-two. If you really think about it, all our goals and objectives and vision, strategy, planning was being accomplished this year. So we're going to be laying out a long-term, strategic plan for the next five years, that'll be done by six. Um, so we're gonna be laying, laying out a long-term, long-term strategic plan for the next five years, that'll be done by six months through this year. Also, Rich, um, completed his C I T training, that's been a hundred percent, uh, for us, or also the C I T training. Officer Wilson also just completed a crime prevention training, our post for the detective position went up December fifteenth, staying up till February fifteenth. Uh, Detective Allen's announced that he's gonna retire, he's at forty years in, it's time, he just said he wants to enjoy his retirement. We have already got four extraordinary qualified people, actually, one homicide detective from Hollywood, California. Uh, so, we've actually, those are that, we're at Ford Police Association, uh, we've got real good response from that. Uh, I've been at Ford Police Association Winter Conference, actually, I just left there a little bit to make sure I could make this, or today. One of the things I'm looking at, I'll send a list of the things that I'm looking at to support, but one of the legislative bills are H B one eighty-nine, that's three four ten, which are gonna be, uh, photographic enforcement for school zones. Um, so when the red light cameras came out, I was in the traffic division of the sheriff's office, so I was up to speed on that, so I'm gonna have to finally get myself up to speed, because it's been quite some time since they started, and I'm familiar with the controversy back and forth with those, but, uh, I'll take a look at that, and that's something initially I think that I want to support, I'll, I'll send it out to you guys, and see the pros and cons of that.
Can you do that, will you, can you investigate a little bit, I mean, one of the issues that I have with the federal enforcement is that the due process portion of it is very costly for recipient, I'm taking, so, you know, that, I don't have any problem with the actual enforcement, I want people to follow the rules, but I'm curious to see what the, what the due process portion is, I want to see that for Alan.
It may depend on which venue to deal with, to be honest with you, I think it's, uh, finalizing our twenty twenty-one report, it's also good to say that, uh, we've been at full staff for quite a while, but, uh, we've had some people on light duty for injuries, but we're finally back up, knock on wood, with everybody out there, with the exception of actually COVID, uh, but they just don't seem to really, this time around, they're not knocking people out for that long, people back pretty quickly, so, that's, uh, good, good to report that, we're excited, everybody's back, real full staff, we're ready.
I built the facility last week, and it just looks amazing, it's, it is, it's gonna be a giant step forward, you know, and, uh, you know, something that will be able to grow with for many, many years, I'm glad everybody's working on that.
Our plan is that I'll probably sign the M O U with accreditation, that is probably the end of this month. Um, I'll talk to you, you know, about that, maybe we may want to do that actually, when we do the grand opening, second, that'll be a good thing to do, sign our, our name on that. We have three years to make accreditation measures, my goal is to make it by October this year, so, and I think we're ready for that, so.
I can full speed ahead. Per, per, are there anything, like, to add?
Yes, we will not be having an election in March. So, you'll be wearing kind of pose, which Molly Rose will be taking Chris Bass's position.
Certainly pleased to have this Rose back to, with her experience and, and definitely less. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it a lot, thanks for my job, a lot there. Steven, are you, do you want to run?
No, I'll pop you.
I'm not gonna be mayor, I swear.
John's at Seven Dollar Town today, but just, uh, I want to make sure everybody understands what a great job he's done with the mayor office. Uh, all furniture is put in the building this afternoon, it'll be assembled tomorrow, so.
Yeah. Show them your room. Quite down with that, that. Anything additional, sorry, we've been kind of stepping off, I appreciate all your work.
One thing, I'm nineteen, this is my probably here twenty-nine years. I started when I was two.
I was just gonna say, Dorothy.
I appreciate all your experience in, uh, helping everybody through the, uh, signature process as well, since it's all different issues. Any conditional further, like, one last thing, with your wine and dine is still on, and it's Edward's fit, right?
Yes.
It'll be Edward's. Okay, so, on the fit.